Cash, I, you know what? If you wanted to make a check to the Elginac Rotary, we can cash it and get it to them.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. All right, uh, that goes, uh, public comments. Do we have any public comments tonight? Any public comments?
I'll go.
Steve Craft, six, four, three, one, G-N-O. A couple of things I wanted to bring up. The township website, way out of date. Somebody, whoever's responsible for it, if you could update it. The last budget was 2021. All right, so nothing. The personnel roster is not up to date. Whatever's happening, it's not being up to date. It's making it hard to find out what's going on, so. The other thing is, I went researching through, um, in our last conversation at the last meeting, about the mission statement, the motto, and the township governance of excellence. I find nothing on any of that stuff that, that talks to anything about township employees, the board, elected officials, anybody being fiscally responsible with tax dollars. Zero information on that. So I would just hope that maybe you guys would do a resolution or something, or add it to one of those things where saying that you're going to be fiscally responsible with tax dollars. It's not there. I know you got a lot of things going on, but I would just appreciate that. Make it a lot easier for us to watch what's going on, so. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing none. Move right along. Uh, the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the board meeting minutes from eight, seven, twenty-three. The resignation of dispatcher, uh, A-P shut reports with the board approved checks and in-between meetings checks.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, uh, signify by saying aye, please. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have fire chiefs report. Chief George Rose.
Good evening. Fire chiefs report for July 2023. During the month of July, I attended three meetings. One was the, um, Sinclair Flats Association. The other two were, uh, Sinclair County Chiefs Association, which we did not do much on that night. We didn't have a quorum that night now, so would like to thank the police department and chief coach for allowing us to use his training room because Clay Township posted that, uh, uh, meeting. Also, we had a meeting with the coast guard. We were planning out the next event, which was raft off, uh, which was held on, uh, August 12th. Department will be working on getting permission from Todd Chartier, which we did, allowing us to use his vacant lot in South Channel for our staging and our command post and medical, um, staging. Uh, among, uh, we did, uh, receive, uh, the job of deploying the balloons this year again, along with other tasks. Clay Fireboat One assisted Elginac Fire Department, uh, with their fireworks display. Uh, we did a, uh, fireboat display for sensation boats in the month of, uh, July. Uh, department also assisted the Clay Township Police Department in transporting them down on, uh, the Baltimore and a noise complaint, and both stations have been staffed.
Great. Any questions for chief?
Chief, when you, uh, when you set up balloons, like your balloon deployment, are they like, um, reference points?
Yes, they are.
For you and your emergency staff?
Yes.
That's why they're kind of color-coded and...
Yeah, when they, people call dispatch, I say, well, I'm to the right of the yellow blue or between a yellow and a red.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you know, they'd say, I'm the white boat with the blue top.
I think it's fantastic, but I was just guessing it, you know, what they were used for, and then I saw it on your report, so I just, I had to ask.
They're very useful.
I agree.
Very useful. And we also use them at, uh...
Jobbie.
Jobbie Nunez, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, uh, their new business. First thing, we have a discussion of our, uh, business hours and the, for the administration and building department. This kind of got spurred by, um, we were asking contractors, because all our employees, we get here at seven in the morning. Um, our contractors were, uh, requesting us to open at six, or seven-thirty, just because they can come in here before, you know, they, they get on their job site and, um, take care of business in the building department permits and such. So, um, you can see, I think, all but maybe, I don't know how many, whether it was about twenty-five, thirty, and pretty much all but two said they would utilize that service. And then, um, we have stats of how many people actually come into the office after five-thirty. And, uh, as you can see, it's by month by month, uh, since 2022 in April, and it's only point six-seven percent of one percent amount of transactions done in that time. So not too many people from five-thirty to six, six o'clock. So we're suggesting we may want to open our, our doors, our business hours at seven-thirty in the morning and, uh, and operate till five-thirty, so.
Whereas we are in eight to six.
Eight to six.
Right now.
Right now.
Monday through Thursday.
Yep. Eight to six. As you can see, the, the need seems like is there.
Well, you really just pulled the contractors and not the people, so, I mean, if we're already here at seven o'clock, why can't we have certain people, why can't we be open from seven-thirty to six and have people rotate? Someone open at seven-thirty and when someone stays till six? I, I don't think we should close earlier than, than six o'clock when people work till five and, and they're in the city. I mean, you're looking at just transactions here, not phone calls, not people stopping in and asking questions. I mean, you can't, you know, we're already not open on Friday, so I, I don't think we should shorten the hours in the evening. I mean, there are plenty of people upset that we have the board meetings at seven instead of, or at six instead of seven, so closing the whole township down at five-thirty, I don't, I don't think is a good idea personally. If you're already here at seven, why can't someone...
You guys do the, the desk more.
I mean, most of the time, it's very, very quiet after five-thirty. Um, I feel like it might be beneficial for some people that are on their way to work in the morning that want to stop in when we're open.
They use the hour when the doors are closed to go, you know, count the cash drawer and get ready for the next day and, and that type of thing, and that would continue to be the fact, you know, at seven in the morning, they make sure that everything's counted and, you know, like our, makes our auditors definitely happy. So they're, they're not just sitting here behind locked doors doing nothing. Um, and it's hard to do that while they're, you know, conducting businesses, business.
Well, if they alternate somehow, you know, I don't think they're going to get a huge amount of people at seven-thirty either, but maybe I'm wrong. I just think people who work till, till five at night are going to have a hard time getting here by five-thirty if they need to.
Mm-hmm. And now today, most of our stuff can be done online, just about all of it. You can't pick up or permit online, no.
Well, again, this is just a discussion because anything would have to go in front of the union. They would have to have a letter of understanding. We can't just say, hey, you're working different hours just because we want you to. It was just a discussion amongst the board to see if there was any interest in pursuing it, having those discussions with them. That's all.
So it was just an idea we, we toss out.
But, I mean, they're already here at seven, so I guess it's a discussion, but, you know, they just, some of them work at seven-thirty and then stop at five-thirty, and some work from...
It's hard to, you gotta...
They're still going to come in at seven because they're balancing the drawer and pulling the, the drop boxes and processing permits or whatever has come in overnight.
And for internal controls, for our auditors, we, we need, you know, it's certain staff here. Not everybody can accept cash. Not everybody can issue the, you know, you need to pay this much for this and that, you know, the segregated duties, so it's hard to have, have staff in rotating.
Once you get bought in on this idea, um, what, does the possibility exist that one out of the four days, um, you know, we keep the eight to six, and maybe three out of the four days, you go to the seven-thirty to five-thirty? Maybe like a little hybrid, maybe, just talking out loud.
Right, we can do anything we want.
If we've got both ends of the spectrum, I mean...
Right.
You know, this sheet is, obviously, it's, it's slanted to contractors and builders, which, you know, most of those guys start at six-thirty, seven o'clock in the morning, so yeah, they're going to love it.
Right.
Um, but, you know, then I worry about, you know, assessing and the front counter and the other people that go with it.
That's a good idea. Maybe two and two. You know, you've got four days, so maybe two days. Seven-thirty, five-thirty, two days to eight to six.
It's just hard to communicate and keep it straight. What's today? When are they open? Can't remember.
Right.
Yeah. Well, we're just spitballing, right?
Yeah.
Just talking.
I mean, I would suggest if you wanted to stay open to six o'clock on Mondays, go eight to six on Monday, maybe we could...
And then seven-thirty to five-thirty Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah, and we can track it and see how it goes.
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, you guys should probably have a heavier hand and influence. I mean, you guys are the ones that are staffing it.
Well, they're, they're clerks and the sheriffs.
Yeah, when I say they, yeah.
Yeah.
And their departments and their staff, of course.
You have to be here till six on Mondays anyway for the meetings, so, you guys anyway.
Do you think, if, if you adopted a seven-thirty start time, so that would give your employees only half an hour of a closed-door policy, would that be enough time to prep for the day?
Usually.
Well, they're still going to work till six, right?
It's dependent on, you know, what's going on, obviously. Same thing with treasury, you know, whether it's tax time or, or whatnot, so.
Right.
Well, they can do half of it.
Essentially, everything would just fall back a half an hour, you know?
Yeah, when you slide the opening time back.
You'd slide the opening back?
Yep.
But they're still going to be here till six, so they can do part of it five-thirty to six that night, and the rest of it seven, seven-thirty the next morning.
Yep.
They have to get their...
And that may not even be something that, you know, works out. So it would really be a test run. We've had quite a few contractors ask us about, you know, hey, you know, I'd really like to be on the job site by eight, anyway, you guys could open earlier, which is kind of what prompted that.
Yeah, they're here at seven doing their work, and they got people knocking on the window.
Yeah, please, just let me in.
Yeah, yeah.
But do you, do you feel that that particular example is relevant between all of the departments of the front office, or primarily building?
Well, if they're here to, to pull a permit, then they're going to use treasury when they're done at, at the building.
Because they got to pay for the permit.
So they got to go boom, boom.
Yep. Got to pay for the permit.
Okay, well, that's some perspective.
And truthfully, there's a lot of builders that ask a lot of questions with assessing,
If you decided to make a change, you, you think initially it would be better to make it across the board?
Easier to communicate. Would you want to, I'm just throwing it out there, would you want to try it for three months and we bring it back?
Do you have to run that by your union representation first?
Well, they would, they would have to be on board with a letter of understanding, yeah, but somebody's got to do something first, right? Somebody's got to make a commitment.
Yeah, right. Would that be, that a hybrid model, or...
Whatever we want to do. Make the motion.
Well, this doesn't affect me, per se.
Right.
You know what I mean? So I hate to be the one to table a motion.
Clerk for the treasurer, want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, for a period of three months, set the office open hours from seven-thirty to five-thirty.
Starting September one? Why, let's do a start date.
Well, the fifth is, the fourth is Labor Day.
Okay.
So the fifth is Tuesday.
Starting September fifth, for a period of three months, and we'll revisit it sometime in November. How's that sound?
Support.
Okay, motion and support. And the motion is that we will temporarily try our, uh, office hours from seven-thirty to five-thirty for a period of three months, at which time the board will revisit, uh, to see how it's working. Does that sum it up?
I like the one day till six, personally. At least, you have at least one day to get here till six on Monday.
Well, that was the motion, right? What was your motion?
Motion was all seven-thirty to five-thirty every day.
Correct. Okay, yep. I just think we would have a hard time communicating with the contractors what day they can come in early and, and other people with time they can come in late, so.
Personally.
Change the recording and put the hours on the door, so I can communicate it, you know?
Well, if you get enough complaints at the end of the three months...
We'll know.
We can change it.
Yep, we'll know.
We know where to go from there.
All right, we have motion and, uh, support. Let's do roll call.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Sandy Valentine, yes. John DeBoer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
No.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hiltonen?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next, uh, we have, I'd like to recommend appointment to, um, our ZBA board, Margie Ferris, and, um, she's been in, uh, she's owned several businesses in the past and has a well-versed background. You're a real estate broker, right? And that's her in the front row, if you're curious. And, um, she's expressed lots of interest, and, uh, I've been talking to her off and on for a couple of months, and, uh, she's able and willing to serve.
I'll make a motion to appoint Margie Ferris, the partial term of eight-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three, to eleven-fifteen, twenty-twenty-four. However, your letter of recommendations as to replace Samantha Bynum. I have not officially received a resignation from her. I would move in my motion to replace Maureen Bory. A little cleaner paperwork. Unless, you don't want to be on the ZBA anyways. I'm assuming you've already been to one meeting.
Yep, it's good with me.
Yes, and it's going to be sad if we're going to lose Samantha. She, I'll, I, I know last, that was her last meeting, but I'll get a letter of, so we are still looking for one other person. Support. Okay, so we have motion and support. Any discussion, any questions?
Unless you want to be an alternate, because they want to...
For Margie, or... Hearing none. All in favor of, uh, appointing, uh, Margie Ferris for the ZBA to replace, uh, Maureen Bowerys, Bowerys?
Bowery.
Bowery, thank you.
It's like Lori, but with a B, Bowery.
Okay, Lori Bowery. Okay, I'll remember that. Um, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Congratulations. You'll have to get sworn in.
I do have some paperwork for you, if you'd like to come pick it up, though.
Yeah, come on up. It's all right, don't be shy. I know. And, uh...
You're welcome.
We'll, we'll get, uh, up, uh, the ordinances and, and all that stuff for you, too. So, all right? All right, thank you. Good seeing you again. All right, next, we have our, um, engagement letter. I, I need permission to sign to, um, oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Purchase agreement. Uh, I'd like to have the authority to, sir, or sign a purchase agreement for the property that we want to put this algae wheel, uh, treatment plant on. It's three lots, and, uh, we're going to be, the township will be buying it for one dollar, and, um, plus closing costs. And I did get an estimate of the closing cost will be, uh, eighteen-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and sixty-five cents, approximately. So, um, I'd like to, uh, get permission from the board to execute the, um, purchase agreement and also closing for the property for one dollar. And in our, uh, we're giving them a warranty deed where if, uh, we're basically going to be using it for wastewater treatment plant, and if we don't, if it goes south or, or something happens, uh, the property reverts back to the owners. And, um, so I'd have to get our dollar back.
Well, and the eighteen-sixty-six, is that going to come out of the new fund of five-ninety-two?
Yeah.
And then are we going to wait till after the twenty-second to see what Eagle says, or...
Well, that's tomorrow.
Right, so...
So, but regardless, I mean, i-if Eagle says absolutely positively you can't build it there, it's not going to happen anyhow.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, they're looking at, uh, their legal team today. Um, I have talked to them today to see if there's anything else, but I presented them the purchase agreement with the warranty deed, um, giving them, you know, uh, control of it. I mean, because I even have a hard time, yeah, we're going to Eagle tomorrow, we want to do this. Well, we don't control the property just yet.
Right.
But, so, um, that's what we propose to do.
Is that a motion? Or you waiting on a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion that I have the authority to, uh, execute a purchase agreement and closing for the property at the end of Maple, uh, for a wastewater treatment plant servicing San Souce area. Support. Motion and support. Anything else? Any discussion?
So I don't think we need to make a contingent on a Eagle approval?
No, because it's going to be in the warranty deed, covers them for it.
Well, I understand the property's only a dollar, but if we're going to pay eighteen-hundred dollars in closing costs, I would want to make sure that it's on property that we're going to be utilizing first.
Right.
So, any chance you want to amend your motion with Eagle's site plan approval?
Um, but it might be three, four months before we get final approval.
Well, I don't think he's going to sell it somewhere else, is he?
But it'd be nice to be able to, I mean, we're, we're going to have a, a, they're, I'm anticipating tomorrow, they're going to give us some boxes we have to check. Um, but it's going to be four or five months before they actually give us the permit. Um, so, I, I mean, if it looks favorable, I'd like to move forward with the property, but if it doesn't look favorable, we won't.
And we have the two million anyway to cover the eighteen.
Yeah. So...
I'm just kind of confused, like, if Eagle's going to approve for us to build this algae plant, why they wouldn't approve to do the, just a septic field, you know? That would have been fifty thousand instead of three and a half million. I'm kind of confused about all that, but I don't understand it all, so.
Yeah, there's a lot to it, so.
Artie, that was your motion, and John supported it.
Yes. Any more discussion?
Can you, can you just explain, so you'll have to forgive my ignorance, right? I don't understand real estate, nor do I understand warranty deeds. So I don't really, how does that safeguard us? Can you just, can you expound on that?
Actually, it safeguards the owner of, that's giving the property to us.
Okay.
And, you know, the title work came in, it was all good. I had our attorney do that, and, uh, the warranty deed is, basically says, okay, well, uh, we can't, we're not going to build a wastewater treatment plant there. Let's turn it into a parking lot or a park or, or a water park or anything. That stops us saying that we, we're using it for a wastewater treatment plant facility and nothing else. Um, because if that goes south, I'm sure the owner of this property is going to want to utilize, or possibly could utilize it for a different type of, of septic system, you know, for, for them.
So do you think we'll get any kind of indication after the meeting tomorrow, whether it's going to move forward or not? Or we won't know anything for five months?
I really don't know. I know that we're, we're having an audience with Eagle, and there's going to be a lot of, um, high-ranking Eagle officials there, also people from our state representative and Senator Hertel's office. I think he's going to be there himself. Um, and, uh, there are a lot of eyes watching this from close and afar that want to see this happen and are very excited about it. I mean, basically, we're going to say, okay, Eagle, we got point one, eight, point eight-one acres here. We're potentially taking a hundred-and-twenty septic fields offline that aren't really working that well. I mean, what's the, what's the better for the overall, overall quality of water and quality of life? So, um, that's my hopes, and, uh, we'll have to see what they, what they come up with. We, I, I know the other division of Eagle that deals with wastewater, they, they love this idea.
Well, they already gave us two million, so they're probably going to pass it realistically. They're going to make sure it happens.
And as far as mitigation, I mean, the only thing I'm going to really contribute to the meeting is if they want money to do this mitigation, okay, does it make sense to get money from the state and give it back to the state to mitigate this point-eight-one acres and taking mon, that money away from the project? Um, so I'm, I'll, I'll let them fight that one out themselves, but that's, that's tomorrow's morning battle. We're going to warrant at their office, so.
Well, I'd like to, you to go there with, with some ammunition.
Oh, yeah.
If you think this provides leverage, and you, you don't...
Well, we'll have control of, of the, um, of the property at least. I mean, I hate to get there and say, well, you don't even have authori, you're not even authorized to buy it, so.
And this doesn't put the township in any type of liability situation?
Now, we cleared this with the attorney.
There's no, like, old abandoned sites or anything on the pro, I'm not aware of where this is, but...
It's at, at the end of Maple. Nope, there's no easements, no weird easements. We did the title search. Attorney did the title search, it came out good, and she, our attorney, wrote the, um, the warranty deed, so.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor? Signify by saying, oh, we got to do, is it contract? I got to do a roll call. Roll call.
Um, without the Eagle site plan approval, my vote is no. John DeBoer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hiltonen?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. All right, next we have our annual audit for a cost of $36,500 and...
It's a not-to-exceed number, right?
Not-to-exceed. And although that doesn't account for, I believe it was, the DDA, which isn't that much, and doing the Gatsby numbers. And they just charge us for their normal hourly rate. So, they want me to sign this letter of engagement. It's pretty much what we do every year.
Is there anything with HEADA involved in this? I know...
I... You know, they... I don't think they're going... I think HEADA is going to seek their own audit, someone else to do their own audit this year.
Independent?
I had conversations with them and I don't think they've done anything formally. I talked to them about their treasure and I think they're going to seek, which is good.
Maureen, do you know their fiscal year end?
I have no idea.
Are you Maureen?
Oh. No, I don't. I'm not. Do you know their fiscal year?
No, I don't.
Yeah.
So, has that been combined in the past?
Well, yes.
Yes.
Last year.
Last year, because...
Just one time?
Yeah.
Well, they're sub-governmental of us. So, if... We had given them the option last year if they wanted to pay to do their audit as part of our audit or if they were going to do it on their own. And they chose to work with our auditors.
Okay.
We just need to make sure that they get audited, that's all.
Right.
Okay.
So, how do we do that? How do we ensure that?
Well, they're supposed to provide us with a copy of their audit.
They have to provide the auditors with a copy of it.
Right.
That's something that she said if they were... If they were going to get an audit from somewhere else, they needed a copy of it because they still have to submit it in our audit.
No later than October 31st, right? It looks like.
Correct.
Expect to begin our audit on August 28th and issue our reports no later than October 31st, so...
In years past, with different HEADA boards, I don't think they ever got audits. And we requested and it was very argumentative and they basically said, no, we're not giving you an audit report. And then we had to show them where they're required to, so... But happily, this board is working good with us as far as that.
I also don't think for years past they didn't have any revenue. They weren't meeting, so it wasn't... It was because they got that state funding.
Yeah.
That now they have to report and we have to have a copy of their audit if they don't do it with us.
Mm-hmm. So, again, let's see. Need a motion for us to... May we just sign and engage the engagement letter for our auditors?
I'll make a motion to approve the annual audit, UHY not to exceed $36,500 letter of engagement.
Support. Motion of support. Any more discussion?
This is cheaper than what we paid last year, right?
Well, I think it's the same.
Less HEADA, yes.
What's that?
With less HEADA, yes.
Yes. And also, last year, we had to pay them to do the OPEB, which was extra. And this... And as you recall, we have another firm that's more experienced doing the OPEB study that's doing it for us. So, yeah, it is cheaper. I mean, I remember when I first got in an office here, we were paying over about $100,000 a year for our audit. So...
And this is a different company?
No, this is our same...
Oh, it is?
Yeah. Well, it's UHY. It was Stuart Bovet Wippel, but UHY bought them out, but it's the same team, management team.
We weren't paying $100,000 with these.
No.
Yes, that was a different company.
Yeah.
But they were...
I don't mean last year. I know it's a different name, but it wasn't UHY, but they bought them out, okay.
Previously, basically, they came in and did the accounting for the year and then the audit.
Okay.
Because there was nobody in office doing the day-to-day, month-to-month accounting functions.
Got it.
All right, roll call, please.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Motion passes. Next, according to our policy, have to accept contribution from our insurance company, Nickel &amp; Saf, $3,057.58. And it's to pay for their part of the Lexipol agreement that they told us they would because they think Lexipol is a wise choice for us and reduce our liability.
I'll make a motion to accept the $3,057.58 check from Nickel &amp; Saf on behalf of the Clay PD for their policy and training melitons.
Support. Motion of support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, next we have to hire a new full-time dispatch, Brenda Lewis.
Well, we'll bring Brenda up here.
Oh, yeah. We got to embarrass you, Brenda.
Well, I think a lot of you know Brenda already. She's worked around the area and she's been a longtime resident in the community as well. She has currently worked for our schools and the busing system there. And they're not liking the fact of losing her. She comes highly recommended by her coworkers as well as her powers-to-be over there. And basically, everybody we've talked to who've got nothing but glowing recommendations. She'd come in to interview with us, interviewed quite well, and actually did her homework about what it's all about to be a dispatcher and what it entails. And she thinks she's definitely got the tools to step in and get the training and get the job done. So, we're looking forward to it.
She's a heck of a photographer, too. She does a lot of our photography events for us. So, I want to thank her for that. Brenda, I got to ask everybody. Everyone knows the questions. Do you know how to swim?
Do I know how to swim? Yes.
Okay.
If she needs to swim, we're in trouble.
She shouldn't have to.
Yes, I know. You never know.
Great, great.
Anybody have any questions for Brenda? Well, entertain a motion.
Mr. Snoss, do you have any previous experience working with any other municipalities or departments?
No. So, I do have... At the bus garage, I've worked in the office for the last six years out of the eight that I've been there. And since we're so small, there's three of us. We do everything there. So, I've done dispatching and everything in the office there, so...
Gotcha.
How long is the training program for her?
Our training program? It's going to be in several intervals. Different parts of the training take different lengths of time. But basically, she's going to be for the first year. There will be ongoing train throughout that first year.
That training is state-funded, correct?
Correct. State-funded and she will be state-certified once done.
And do you have a shift? Certain shifts she works or...
Yes, and that all comes down to union contracts.
Okay. Seems there's been some turnover, so I was just wondering. She's probably replacing someone, huh?
Yes. That would be Austin, young man who... Very young man. And I think he kind of got a little too antsy sitting in the one spot all day.
Okay.
Which you can't blame him there.
Right.
That's his resignation that we accepted earlier morning.
That's who it was, yeah. Okay. From last meeting, sure.
Port, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Clay Township pleads new hire for dispatcher and full-time... I'm sorry, Brenda Lewis.
Support.
Okay, we have motion of support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Brenda. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, you want to grab this?
Need anything, let us know. Okay, next we'd like to accept an in-kind donation from Sensation Boats. They actually had a sea dune that had some damage. And they took it upon themselves to repair the damage for us. And I'm told the actual... One of the actual owners, Wayne, did it himself. So, kudos to Wayne and did a great job.
To mess.
And I just entertain a motion that we accept the in-kind donation.
Make a motion to accept the in-kind donation from Sensation Boats for the repair of our fire department sea dune.
Support.
Motion of support. Any more discussion? Tell you what, it's a great local company and I've been talking to them. They're right next door here. I know they're building a big facility out on 26 Mile Road, but they guarantee or they tell me that they are going to keep this... The doors open here and they're using it for R&amp;D for their new models. And if there's any... They sell a lot of boats that sometimes needs a lot of custom work. And they're actually going to do the custom work here, too. So, they aren't leaving and we're glad to have them in Clay Township. So, we have motion of support?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of accepting an in-kind donation? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next we have the Lexipol Policy and Academy. This is for the fire department. This is a budget item. And as we saw with our Nickel &amp; Saf, our liability insurance, they are behind this program 110%. And so, we're bringing the board that we do this same for the fire with the Lexipol Policies and Academy.
Is this our first time with the fire?
No.
I don't think so. This is a renewal, right?
Yes.
Port, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Clay Township Fire Department Lexipol for the policies and academy in the amount of $10,786.27 coming from line item 206-960.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
So, Nickel &amp; Saf made a contribution to the police, but they're not making toward the fire?
They will. We have to approve it first.
We'll ask them.
Okay. So, they might...
They will.
How was the police...
It's a percentage of their policy manual and daily training bulletin.
25%.
I just wondered if theirs was also $10,000. So, theirs was a little more. It was $3,000, okay. All right. Theirs was probably closer to 12.
Gotcha.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. All right, next we have for the fire department replacement of some Scott 60-minute cylinders, two of them,
Port, I'd like to make a motion to approve for the Clay Township Fire Department the replacement of Scott 60-minute carbon cylinders. There's two of them at $2,904 coming from line item 206-764.
Support.
Okay, motion of support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we have for the fire department's request for commercial marine boom for the cost of $4,615.91. This is to contain oil spills. And just so you know, the board... I was actually talking to the head of the Coast Guard this past weekend at... Or two weekends ago at Raftoff. And we want to utilize some of these where if we have an oil spill, say going down the North Channel, that we could put them, have them all ready to go and deploy, put them across where the Crispin Drain is, canoe cut, Grand Point Cut, the different cuts along the North Channel that feed into the Colony and backed by Sassy Marine and that. Then I was trying to expand on that and they're very interested of actually having a boom that we can deploy across the big... The head of the middle channel. You know, go from Harson's Island over to the head of Dickinson Island. And I estimated it would probably take... I'd have someone smarter than me that knows this stuff better. But, you know, it'd probably take two or three anchors we'd have to deploy to hold it in place plus at the end of each shore and even deploy some lights because, you know, we do that, it's going to be at night, too. They would have to close the channel down. But he... I was actually seeking funding from him through, you know, it'd be through Homeland Security and his division would handle that. And I am going to meet with him probably in the next month or two. He was very interested in that and wanted further information on that. Thought it was a really good idea. Because if you know... We've done studies. If there's a spill in the river, it will contain to one side or the other. Like if it's up by the bridge on the Canadian side, believe it or not, it stays. Well, the wind has something to do with it, but it will hug the Canadian shore. If it's on the American side, it will hug the American shore until it hits the North Channel and turns that bend and then it goes... And it spreads. And then, you know, it'd be horrible if we had a huge fuel oil spill, which there was a freighter in Lake Michigan dumping a bunch out a couple, about a month ago. And, you know, that would get into our Marshes and both St. Johns and, you know, by Dickinson Island and Harson's Island if it got in that middle channel. And it'd be pretty hard to clean up. So, I just wanted to let you know we'll be working on that going forward. So, sorry to go on a tangent, but in front of us, we have a question to buy 300 feet of commercial boom for $4,615.91.
So, I'm a little confused where the $4,615 comes from because I only had come up with $4,450.
Well, I didn't do any math.
It's attached, $4,4... Yeah.
Is this new equipment? Is this brand new?
Chief?
What's that?
Is this brand new equipment or just used?
Brand new.
It's brand new?
Yeah, and it can be reused.
Does it have to be tested or how long does... What's the lifespan of it?
It's good for indefinite until it gets, you know, contaminated or saturated. It is plastic coated. Let me come up with that.
Yeah. It floats on the surface with a little curtain.
Yeah, the stuff that we have is cotton and it's about six inches to eight inches around. This is 18 inches and it will withstand the currents in a river. The stuff we have would not hold in place like this stuff is. It's heavy duty, commercial-grade boom.
And the cotton, you use it once and then you're done.
Exactly.
You know, I'd like to have it on hand if we get a spill at one of our marinas.
Right, we can go around vessels if they're leaking any type of fuel or any...
Boat accident.
Right. Sinking, you know, we do get them in the canals. We'll put boom around them to contain it.
Yep.
So, are we purchasing one similar to what Taj Moon Marina purchased?
Is this... The invoice on this says bill to Taj Moon Marina. Is this, the invoice on this says bill to Tajmo Marina.
Actually, it was Cell Channel Homes, he bought, he bought the boom. And he's asking if we would be interested in buying it.
We were going to buy it ourselves.
So, he hasn't used it?
No.
I think they bought it in conjunction, helping out with the old club, wasn't it?
Yes, they did.
That's the reason they bought it.
Well, he paid 4,200 for it and he paid 250 for a hot rush, which makes it 4,450. We shouldn't really have to pay for his hot rush. 4,200 is the amount on it. Yeah, like she said, I don't know where we're coming up with 4,615. Do you want to see the bill?
Well, the 4,615 is with the tax backed off because obviously, we don't pay tax, but I'm just wondering if there was more to this bill that maybe...
Well, the 4,450 with 6% tax equals 4,717, so it doesn't come up to 4,615 anywhere. Maybe the 4,200 times 6%.
If we had to use it, how much does it cost to have it cleaned?
We could do that ourselves.
Oh, okay.
George, what is deconing?
Chief, do you think we're in a position?
What's that?
What is deconing? What is that? What does that mean? It says the boom can be reused after deconing it.
Probably cleaned it, deployed, after deployed.
I was just curious.
Just, the numbers don't really add up. Did we try to get another quote just to make sure we're paying a good price?
Could make a motion, we pay 4,200 because we're not in a hot rush.
Doesn't really say who we bought it from. Absorbents Midwest? It just seems like we should do a, you know.
I can talk to him and bring it back to you at the next board meeting, talk to him about the hot rush and then we remove the hot rush and the taxes on it.
Is this your recommendation that you want this on hand?
It would help us in, in the event that we did have a, a oil spill or a fuel spill in the river. We don't have it boom enough or capability of deploying any, especially across the Crispin Drain. If that gets into, down there, I mean, it's going to go right into the reserve.
Wasn't there just a fuel, freighter fuel spill last week somewhere?
Yeah, Lake Michigan. What was it, 46,000 gallons?
Yeah, if you can maybe check.
But there's a freighter spill, how much is that going to contain? Out of 46,000 gallons?
Well, we're trying to block it off so it goes by the...
What is going to filter, is going to push it downstream to Anchor Bay, we'll let our friends in Ira and...
Send it down the road.
What is saving is it going into sensitive areas like the Marshes.
Well, it's 18 inches deep by 50 foot wide and we're getting six of them, so it'll go as far as 300 feet wide, right? And how wide are we at the Middle Channel there?
Well, this wouldn't work for the middle channel.
We can't, the Middle Channel, but we can at least protect some of the canals and stuff.
Yeah, we have one, two, three, four. We have about six, six canals, seven canals that we'd want.
And I mean, if we could just look up a price from somewhere else to make sure we're, you know, that he paid a good price, that Tajmo paid a good price before we approve it. That's what I would recommend.
It's a budget item, right? If you think you need it, I mean, I could get on board if, like a blanket statement of do not exceed 4,200.
Okay.
Like if that's, if you're coming to us and that's what you, you want it and it's your budget, I could get behind that.
I would like to have, have that. We're also working with Emergency Management, Justin Miss Miller, he's going to assist us with some of this. He's, he has some boom also that he's going to contribute to us downriver, so we'll have an emergency response, at least we can help contain some of it until...
So, is that your motion, Chris?
I'll make a motion to a, to approve the 300-foot of commercial marine boom, coming from line item 206-971, not to exceed $4,200. Does that, does that get you in the ballpark?
Yep. Definitely.
Okay, motion and support. I like that motion. Any more discussion?
I'd just like to see another quote, you know, from somebody else to make sure 4,200 is what the going price is, but...
I did some online research just for S and Gs. It was anywhere from 49 to 6,800.
Okay, if you've done it, then...
So, those are like four different sources of same-like kind of quality product.
Okay.
For what it's worth.
Great, thank you. I'm in then.
All right, all in, we have motion and support?
Yes.
All in favor of making the purchase of 4,200, not to exceed 4,200 for the commercial marine boom, 300 feet? If you signify by saying aye if you want to pass.
Aye.
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 It's like silky.
Yeah. Motion carries, passes. Okay. Uh, where are we here? Next, we have new hire, part-time firefighter. Go ahead, chief.
Yes, I'm requesting permission from the Clay Township Board of Trustees to hire one new part-time firefighter, Daniel Parskevich.
Parskevich.
Parskevich?
Parskevich.
Parskevich, okay. I avoided that.
So, I can spell.
Daniel presently works for Superior Ambulance and he also has firefighter one, firefighter two, and he also holds an EMT certification. We did interview the candidate and he did pass his background check.
Okay, Daniel, have you worked for any other fire departments?
No, not any other municipalities. My background came from Securitas. I was, I was in the chat plant where we did a lot of fire inspection, fire safety from extinguishers. I had put out a couple of fires, not extravagant, but a few minor ones in the plant from just careless people and whatnot. But that's mainly where my fire background comes from.
Daniel, you know how to swim?
Oh, I forgot.
Oh. We're going to have to take you to the Pearl Beach Pier and throw you in and make sure you're...
Just tell, just ask my, just ask, just call my mom, she'll throw me in the backyard in the pool.
Okay, sounds good.
No, I know, I do know how to swim, sir.
I'll make a motion to hire part-time Daniel Parskevich firefighter.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more questions for Daniel? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, Daniel, local board. We'll be seeing you around. Okay, next, we have...
Daniel, I do have some paperwork for you. You're welcome.
All right, next, we have fire new hire, part-time Cole McGuffin.
Cole had to leave, he worked, was working for Try Tonight.
Yep.
And they got a call.
He, uh... He's got what, firefight, firefighter?
Yes, firefighter, firefighter one, firefighter two, and he also has certification in the EMT, state-certified EMT.
Yep, so he's ready to rock and roll. He is the son of our captain.
So, I do have his paperwork, chief, and just as an FYI, we only have his certificate of training to the Fire Academy. I don't have his firefighter one and two certifications.
I have that here. I'll give it to you.
And...
Just so you, heads off, that's all.
We, one, one question I had for George, if he was going to be scheduled working with his father. And that was negative, right?
Yes.
Okay, so he won't, wouldn't be taking direct orders on a daily basis from the cap, Captain McGuffin, so...
Is that still violating our township policy?
Well, I actually asked that question to our attorney and I got the email, blah, blah, blah. She goes, "The board certainly has authority to waive or alter the personal administration employment of relatives policy as is a self-governing policy of self-imposed rules. However, the board chooses to do so, I recommend for reasons in doing so that is clearly stated on the record and included with the motion in order to minimize you did it for one and not the other person's argument." So, that's why I asked if he was going to be taking direct orders from his father.
Well, he won't take direct orders, but the father's still the captain over the department, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know. I mean, is that a concern?
So, I mean, we do have other instances in the township where we have, you know, relatives working with and taking direct orders from, from others. And...
Such as who?
James Palatier and chief coach. And we have another one that, what's the relationship with, um, is it cousin? With Lieutenant Stockwell? And is it Officer Tinerman or... So, we have a couple incidents of police. But I just, you know, we thought, full disclosure, bring it up.
The command structure is a little bit different over there.
Can you expound on that, Cindy, what you mean?
Well, they don't all run to, aren't apt to run to a scene altogether and be under one person, right?
Like the fire.
Where if there's a fire, everyone's showing up. And if chief isn't in town, that, the captain's the guy that's in charge. So, that, my concern.
Well, there's a big, big police emergency, everyone comes, too.
Right, but that, their job isn't to respond to a big chief police emergency all the time. I mean, that's, that's the job of our fire department, that's the expectation of our
Board, on May 24th, we met as a group and we authorized a command staff for Chief Rose. And that command staff, those were a probationary period of 365 days from May 24th. We're three months into that probationary period and we have a captain and potential firefighter. I mean, chief, this is not going to be a popular decision, but I, I can't get behind this during the three-month probationary period. If our captain had gone through your SOGs and your reviews and your evaluations and they came back excellent, it would be a lot easier for me to get behind this. But I feel like it's still a really new position for our captain and I see potential conflict that doesn't make me comfortable.
Artie, when was this policy put in place?
Oh, what's the date on it?
July 21, 2016. Was there a specific reason or was that a recommendation by MTA?
Recommendation and MTA, if it was.
Yeah.
In 2016, we actually created the, our policy manual for Clay Township. Joanne and I were here every weekend for a good six months reviewing policies.
That's when the whole thing went in place.
Right.
Correct. And then we had the board approve it in sections. So, now we review it as things come up, which is nice.
Can we get a, can I get a copy of the whole policy?
I believe you did when you first became trustee.
The MTA book, you mean? Or do we have one just for Clay?
We mean, all, all our policies.
Right, like this, yeah. I don't think I have it if I can get them. I got a red, big red binder, but that's, that's MTA, but it's not Clay Township if you said you...
Regardless, we're kind of getting the weights here.
Talking about this one?
No.
Well, I'll get another copy from you if you don't mind. Is there a way to, well, I mean, you can't tell them not to report if there's a fire and you're not here, I mean, we need them, right?
Well, I'm going to make a motion just to keep the ball rolling here that we hire Cole McGuffin and waive the, the personal administration employment policy of relatives in, in the same motion. Basically, so we're waiving the policy on this case and chief says that he's, you know, not going to be scheduled at the same times, although there could be a time occasionally when there's a fire when they're both there. I'm willing to take that chance, that there would be no problem with father and son. I, I look at other fire departments, I see lots of father and sons and grandfathers and sons working in the same department. We, we need firemen and for that reason, I, in fact, I, I know when I worked for my dad, he was always harder on me. He was, and my grandfather, than the other employees on my right and left.
Yeah, except that brings a lawsuit now.
Uh-huh.
I said, except nowadays, that brings a lawsuit.
Well, it's, it's true. So, you know, they hold you to a higher standard myself, so I'm, I'll make that motion and...
I'll support it.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion before I bring it to a vote?
I know we're not the only municipality that has like a nepotism policy, so...
It's a good policy to have, but I think with, personally with fires departments, it's kind of inbred that, you know, you have, it's, it's a whole family thing. Was it Chicago, there were all the Irish families?
Well, I understand that, but I would, I kind of agree with Chris that our captain should at least be established before we would consider something like this.
And that he also is on probation, so... All right, roll call.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hiltonan.
No.
Chris O'Regan.
No.
Cindy Valentine, no. John DeBoyer.
No.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Okay, motion fails. All right, next, we have, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Next, we have permission to sign a letter of support. I do a copy of it, I don't have it in front of me. I got an email from Lisa McLean's staff and she's trying to get support for bringing the F-35 Lightning II fighter jet to Selfridge, Michigan. And if she gets it, they're saying it'll bring in between, well, I saw 5,500, but in the letter it says 6,000 good-paying jobs and also 50 contractors that will be located in Michigan. And they're looking at about $560 million annual income created from these jobs. So, I'd like authorization to sign a letter of support and send it off to Lisa McLean.
I'll make a motion that we sign the letter of support for the F-35 Selfridge National Base project for Lisa McLean.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Uh, next, we have board member comments. Cindy?
I don't have anything new on election standards yet, so I got nothing to do.
Yeah, I was going to be scrambling at the last moments for you, I'm afraid. Yeah, I was going to be scrambling at the last moments for you, I'm afraid.
It is.
So, John?
Just congratulations and welcome to Margie and Daniel and Brenda, welcome aboard.
All right, Maureen?
Welcome, too. Thank you for taking my place, Brenda and Daniel, and sorry, Cole, but maybe when Dad's out of probation, we can look at it again. And have a very safe, happy Labor Day, everybody.
All right, I'm welcoming everybody to Daniel, Brenda, and Margie. If you guys ever need anything, don't be afraid to get ahold of me. We want you to succeed as, as best as you can. And other than that, there's just a ton of positive things going on in our community. I love it, so it's a fun time to be a resident of Clay Township. I did it out of order, but that's okay, go ahead, Chris.
That's fine, sir. There's no order. The kids of Algonack and Clay Township are going to be going back to school pretty soon.
Yep.
It means that buses on the street gets a lot busier, and people need to slow down a little bit, and we're conscious of what's going on. So I'm showing the first day of school on Tuesday, the 5th, after Labor Day.
Summer's not over yet.
Yep, so with that being said, this week also starts a lot of the boys, girls, and coed high school events, including cross-country, JV football, varsity football at Vassar this Friday, I'm sorry, Thursday, August 24th. Lots of good activities coming up, so love the fall, but let's be mindful of, of the kids and lots of activities on our streets and sidewalks. Thanks.
Want to say something about Battle of the Bands?
Algonack Sports Boosters participated with Marine City Sports Booster, sponsored by the Marine City Lions, for Battle of the Bands, which is a local band, represents each school, and then the followers vote by not casting ballots, but casting donations. So I'm happy to say that Algonack beat Marine City in their own hometown.
Two years in a row?
Two years in a row.
Nice.
Can you imagine if we did that here?
We're working on it.
Yeah, so Mel, the Melger Brothers represented Algonack, so it was a good time.
Yeah, it was fun, it was, it was fun. We also had Rory sponsor the barbecue bourbon and, or bourbon barbecue and brews event. There was a, every bit of 1,000 people there at that event. What I liked about that event, about 85% of the people are from out of town. So they're bringing their dollars here to spend, instead of us just, you know, passing them back and forth. And everyone leaves with a positive taste in their mouth for our area. My God, this, this water is so beautiful, I didn't realize the color and this and that, and stuff that we take for granted, we know. So that was also a good event. I'm looking forward to our music in the park and our backpack giveaway, the turkey shoots Labor Day weekend on the island, and that's always exciting. Is there a pancake, what's that? Is there a pancake breakfast? Yes, pancake breakfast.
Sunday, the 3rd?
Yes.
At the Harson's Island Fire Department?
Yes.
And what time does that start, chief?
8:00 o'clock.
8:00 AM?
Yeah, pancakes, and are we doing eggs? Yes, good, eggs, bacon, it's good stuff.
And the cleanup, don't forget about the cleanup, right?
I'll be there, yeah, well, I mentioned the supervisors report, but the Saturday's cleanup, and packing in a lot in the last few weeks of summer, that's for sure. It's okay.
Motion adjourned.
Okay, motion adjourned. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks for coming, everybody.